Oh, at this time we'll call the March 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Jackson County Border Supervisors to order. We have Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie, the county supervisors, Alisa Smith.
Good morning.
And Luann Goki are with us and David Dreyer is here. Also, it is March 2nd, Election Day, so get out and vote. Good morning, David.
Good morning.
Very light.
Names. That's today. You want approval for five year work program? Some projects. What we can do next week. To TP and that's the name I got happy.
I guess my, my big concern on the whole project is the shifting of 150th Street. Delaying it two years.
Putting it back up in 22. If you want any other scenarios, we can certainly do that too.
Amen.
Yeah, no, I'm not, we're not just bringing back presentation.
Okay. So are we going to do that next Tuesday?
Or are we gonna? My hope is.
Or do we need to meet sometime in between?
We have time. It's up to you.
Will you maybe have something you can email us before the meeting?
I can, I can send you kind of a.
Compare it to. Recommendation?
I mean, I would respect either one. I can go either way. It's, I mean, 150th is bad. It's a short piece of road. If you go over it at the speed limit, it doesn't ride that bad. But we went up there and rode it, you know, at 35 miles an hour. And it's, it's pretty bad. Lots of, you know, cracking or good areas of failure. I mean, definitely want to get it.
Well, whatever we can work out. Yeah, that's, we think that's one of our. Recommendation would be great.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we briefly spoke last week about our bridge inspections. Are they on pace or are they?
Alex's proceedings. We do have about 16 of the river bridges that are too difficult to reach with bell equipment. We got a call from Alex to provide a bucket truck, but that still doesn't get us underneath them. They're too, you know, far above the river channel for inspections of the, which you've got to be it. And so I reached out to I I W to see what they could do for just those 16 bridges. And they can do it for about $600 each, which is a reasonably priced and if you factor in the cost of equipments that's proposed, just to get up without even being able to get underneath, they're right in that ballpark. So.
Well, Dave and I talked the other day and he told me that Alex wasn't going to be able to do those 16 bridges to inspect them the way they needed to be inspected. And he told me that $11,000 that 10,000 that I I W could down, come down and do those 16 bridges since they all have to be done in March. And so I told him, well, we really don't have a choice. Let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Smart thing to do. These are all the fracture critical bridges. Not that Alex came to fracture critical, but they're, they're critical ones that.
Well, if you don't have the equipment to get up and really inspect the bottom of the bridges, then.
My concern is plus it's another person he has to, to bring in and then in things. And so the costs were right generally within.
Yeah.
And then Alex can concentrate on the other dozen that we have to get done that are in the smaller.
Smaller scale.
Things. And we can get this done by April, which is our good one.
So do we do all the bridges or just have?
No, they're on a cycle. Some are two years. The fracture critical ones are 12 months.
We talked about it one time or Mike or somebody did. I don't remember who about splitting them up so we could do it half and half. So maybe next year we do.
It would want to look at the cycle.
Yeah.
Just to see when the P core quote is. When we ideally, you know, could have gotten these kind of knocked out and fallen things, but it was better. I can't imagine trying to inspect a bridge in that cold and things that we had.
You can't?
Well, you could drive on the river and just go up with the truck.
I would, I would hate to tempt that.
I went to particularly moving water.
Amen. Next thing you know, you'd be in New Orleans.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the, one other thing I wanted to touch on, the rural county transportation program is kicking off with the RPA and starting to see some, there's a support from folks and Bellevue and things. I sent, goes on up to Chandler. So he had, and I had to explain to the father of Marquette that I'm not really on the selection panel. So whether I supported a project or not. Materials.
You're not on the panel, but the projects are in Jackson County? What kind of, what, how do we need to do the change?
I don't know how the RPA.
I don't think you can be on the panel if you're.
If they look at the project, but we still.
If you're scoring.
We would certainly look at them, but we, the RPA selection. And my understanding, we haven't been on that panel in the past, so.
But it's a point system basically that I've seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I've seen their application, not that they're going to get what they want, but that's. I still think it's a good program for the smaller.
Oh, it is. It is. Okay, thank you, David. Do we have any visitors or citizens online that wish to address the board? Hearing none. Next we have Becky Chapin, MUMAN Resource Administrator, and I believe she brought Andrew along.
I did, yeah.
With them, with her. Good morning.
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 So we're here for a couple of things today. The main thing was the jail has hired their most recent full-time nature and jailor. Her name is Jenna Merrick. Brent and Andrew have offered the position currently. She has accepted. She's beginning pre-employment, conditional offer physicals. Today, we would ask for approval to hire Jenna Merrick. It's a contracted position right through the asking contract. The starting rate of pay is 1519. So we are here to seek approval of that. And then I as well wanted to give a chance to introduce Andrew to the public as the interim jail administrator. He's got a little bit of biograph, biography that he's going to read, and he's got some information on Jenna as well. He's going to kind of hold the public in on. So first things first, will we ask for a motion to approve hiring of Jenna Merrick as full-time nature and jailor?
So move second.
With a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
March 9.
Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Aye, motion carried.
So I can start with Jenna here. Just a little bit about her.
Okay.
So just a little bit about Jenna here. Here's what she wrote. Hello, my name is Jenna Merrick. I'm in the Iowa Army National Guard and I'm a private first class. I am with 186 Military Police Company. I graduated from McCokey High School in 2019 and joined the Iowa Army National Guard shortly after. I attended basic training from September 2019 to February 2020. My training during basic was called One Station Unit Training or OSUT. In short terms, OSUT is where basic training, AIT are together. And AIT stands for Advanced Individual Training. While I was at basic training, learned how to handle weapons, overcome fears, handle combative individuals, transporting and searching, as well as other military police things. I was out on active duty orders from April 2020 till August 2020. So I think Jenna's going to be a good fit for us. She seems to have some pretty good experience with the military and interviewed very well. She seems confident, like a good person. So I think she'll be a good fit for us.
Great.
Good.
And then just a little bit about myself. So my name's Andrew Long. I'm the interim jail administrator for Jackson County. I began experiencing the law enforcement profession at an early age from riding with my dad, a deputy from when I was about 12 years old. Through the years of riding along with him, I gained a lot of experience with law enforcement, many other different situations. I graduated high school in 2012 and we played my associate's degree with an emphasis in law enforcement in 2013. I then began working part-time in the jail for Jackson County Sheriff's Office. In 2015, I was offered a full-time position at the Clinton County Sheriff's Office. I accepted their offer and worked there until 2018, at which point Jackson County had its first full-time hope. I've completed a lot of training during my time in this field. In addition to approximately 800 hours of continuing education, I've obtained quite a few different certifications. I'm a certified public safety supervisor from Texas A&amp;M University and a certified jail management supervisor from Columbia Southern University, National Sheriff's Association. I'm also certified deal training officer and certified drug abuse recognition by the Midwest Counter Drug Training Center. Additionally, goal distinction of being a certified Iowa Law Enforcement Academy instructor in 11 different areas. I also be attending TASER instructor school next month. So just a little bit about myself there. I don't know if you guys have any questions or not, but just a general overview of myself, so.
Yeah, so Andrew has been with us just over five years, I think this time and a couple of years prior. So he's right about seven years with the county total. And as he said, he's serving as interim jail administrator. I've spoke with chief and sheriff about him. Sounds like they're making great strides over in the jail. I'm excited for some of the things he's implemented and some of the trainings that he's catching up on with jail staff. So it's like things are going in a really good direction. So.
Great, great.
I think Jenna was the last full-time position, so they're back up to full-time staff right now.
With the exception of we're still down one since I'm interim jail administrator. So my position is still down, but otherwise, yeah, we're fully staffed.
Yeah, that's a nice list of credentials and some of them I don't know what they mean, but of course they're, you put your time and diligence in getting them. So that's, that means something else.
Thank you.
It's good to have that background.
Yes, it is. Yep.
And please extend our congratulations to Jenna and welcome her to Jackson County.
Yeah, yes.
It's important that we keep our team environment here and it's very critical in my opinion. And I guess I'll extend that to you yourself. Andrew and I have been working on several different things and I, I think it's been, it's been a good relationship.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was all we have for today.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Don't forget to go vote.
Good luck.
Already did yesterday.
You're putting to the choir there.
Yeah. Oh, it's going to be a long time till nine o'clock tonight. Well, like they said on Cammy Q, they would.
This is a special election. So polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And then based on, you know, this recent legislation, we're, we're going to all the elections till eight o'clock.
Well, which we've wanted for a long time.
You know, I mean, I could do elections since 1985 and I know that we were trying back then to get the time change.
Yep.
I know they place some different restrictions on in that legislation, but I still think there's ample time for people to, if they want to vote and have the time for them to vote and to have the opportunity, but.
I guess my opinion when it comes to that is that the auditor's office will do whatever it takes. We adhere to Iowa law. And we will honor, you know, and, and get done what needs to get done. And hopefully we have our citizens of Jackson County that are cooperative with us understand that this wasn't something that the auditor's office did. This was done through the state.
Yeah.
We'll make the best of it.
Well, we certainly hope we have a good turnout today. So people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alicia or Lisa, do you want to go now since we're a little bit ahead of time?
This morning I made a motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd, 2023, our work procedures.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Alright.
And I didn't know Ryan was here, so.
Okay, I certainly can stop if you want.
We'll just.
Whatever you guys want to do, I'm not.
You can, you can come on up.
I would basically have, yeah, that's fine. It doesn't matter.
We just have a couple more things.
Yeah.
Let's just go ahead.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of $288,876 and $25.
Move to approve second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. Any discussion?
There is.
Part of that gets reimbursed by the insurance company for the bridge.
At 82. Yeah, hopefully it will be.
We want new sheriff's car. That's in there.
Yeah, there was a couple of different questions I had and they were all answered by Shelley and just wanted, yeah. Some of them are pass-throughs, you know.
Yeah.
Well, the one for $11,000 from Imagine the Possibilities was actually from last year. But somehow or other didn't get billed.
Yeah, they didn't bill us.
So. So. Now they've been billed. Now we've been billed. So we'll move from there.
Yeah.
And I guess there was another bill in there. It's, you know, when, when you look at the full scheme of $288,876 and 25 cents, it's not a lot, but there's a bill in there for $360. And it's to the maintenance department for use of their truck to haul snow. And so.
How big is that truck then?
I, I, I have no idea, but no one authorized that to happen. And I think we just need to talk to them and tell them that, you know, it was on the claims. We are allowing it this time, but if it happens again, we need to know about it before it happens.
I'd be more concerned about liability if something were to happen.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Myself included. Okay, if there's no other comments, some, all those in favor of the motion?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And my final thing for right this morning here is a motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorder's reported fees collected for the month of February 2021 in the amount of $30,188.57.
Move to approve and have the chair's signature.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the quarterly report for the recorder. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carry.
And I will finish the rest of my agenda.
Okay. So, Mr. Conley, you may come forward. And how are you today?
Wonderful.
Alright.
How are you folks today?
Good. We're wonderful too.
It's getting a little warmer out. It's nice.
It's pretty much fun.
Almost.
Although that included me being outside for like six hours on Sunday sledding because all the snow is going to be gone soon.
Good.
None of us are feeling bad about it.
No, I am not either. The seven-year-old maybe a little, but they'll get over it. So quick update, we have completed CPR over McCokey Fire Department, Dr. Biden's office, the jail staff, the sheriff's department. And McCokey PD, all except for the reserves. And I have a date set in April to their training officer. They have a monthly meeting apparently for the reserve. So I'm going to crash their monthly meeting and get CPR done for them. And talking with Andrew Long, they're looking for some training to start for both the deputies and the jail staff for some first aid. So we are going to complete the Stop the Bleed course. It's a IDPH course to teach not only basic first aid, but some more advanced techniques to help with trauma and bleeding, packing the wound, when to apply a tourniquet, where to apply a tourniquet, et cetera. I have CPR coming up Saturday morning in Miles for the fire department over there. The EMT class only has seven classes remaining before they are done with the course. And there's only two more lectures. The rest are skills. So everybody's extremely excited about that. And just for a not-so-subtle brag, we have 15 students in the class. And this is their entire grade up to this point. 95%, 95, 95.6, 93.8, 98%, 94, 90, 93, 94, 95, 96, 87, 88, 96. So they are absolutely. I'm sorry, sir.
Who does the grading?
The, it's all computerized.
And are they able to now in, in their hands-on, are they able to ride along?
No, not at this time. Mainly because this, the, the school has contracts set up with the various transport services. And there are so many paramedics, physicians assistants, et cetera, that need right time. They take priority and they just don't have the slots for EMTs at this time.
Do they offer, like this is years ago, when I was in the service yet, but they offer like emergency room? Like I went to the beaut, it's right in the emergency room for.
Typically, typically it's 48 hours, like right up until COVID, it would be 48 hours in an ambulance and then 24 hours in the ER. And that's been wiped off the curriculum for EMRs and EMTs, EMT bases. Again, there's, there's not enough shifts to cover everybody that has to have it. So they have just taken it off the curriculum until this pandemic is.
Just, just wonderful information to have. It's just to sit, sit in and sit in with it, you know, not like you're so much hands-on either, but just to watch.
You, you learn a ton. One way we're attempting to mimic that is we have, so we have four folks in Bellevue and Mr. Schulte and Mr. Reed have been doing their skills. So it does allow those four individuals to utilize their own equipment, meaning Bellevue's equipment, the same for Springbrook and Preston. So we have people from those services that have graciously volunteered to come in. So they're, they're not only getting trained on to, and the national registry standard as to how to pass the practical exam, but they're getting the best we can, real-world experience with those individuals that they will be practicing with. So.
Good stuff.
Yes, sir. So we have skills. The class is ending the 30th of March, I believe. They already have their national practical set up, so that is the hands-on test portion for the first Tuesday in April, and that'll be at NICC. I'm not a part of that. I can't do their practical since I was their instructor. And then they will be able to schedule their written cognitive, cognitive exam, although it's not written, it's all computerized. So about 30 days left for the EMT and we should have 15 new EMTs running around the county. So that'll make 20 four in the last two years or however the math works out between the two EMT forces. I still have a list of approximately 10 people that were interested in this class that we're currently doing. But for various reasons, weren't able to get into the class. I think I had three people attempt to register the day the class started. And the college, it doesn't exactly work that way because there's some background checks and stuff that need to be completed before they sign you onto the class. So I would be absolutely shocked if we don't have another class starting in December. Potentially I could start it earlier, but it just depends on the people that want to share the course and are they going to be in the fields? Which is why traditionally December day works a little better.
But we're very fortunate to have individuals that are willing to do it.
Oh, absolutely.
And taking the time to do it and wanting to learn. The pay is not great.
Big old zero.
We certainly respect these people's time and their efforts to do that. You know, I just can't say how fortunate we are. We have volunteers to do that.
And these people doing it are absolutely crushing. I mean, the amount of hours outside of the classroom that you have to dedicate to get these scores. I had one person get a perfect on the midterm. I mean, they are putting in a tremendous amount of time and as you said, to volunteer.
What's the range in ages?
Well, we have two high school students from the Preston area and the kicker with the high school students, they can go up and, and don't quote me, but I believe the number was $150. So after the end of this course and their successful completion, which they're both going to successfully complete the course, they can go to NICC and give them $150 check. They get eight college credits.
Wonderful.
And they're both attending Iowa after graduation. So they'll get a, they'll get eight credit hours before they ever walk through the door.
That's marvelous.
And I haven't looked up the rates at Iowa, but I suspect $150 for eight credits is quite a bit cheaper than what they would have to pay for eight credits. So that is, that is really amazing. Still on the class. I had to do a pre-approval. I submitted everyone that's taking this class to our grant, the federal grant that then goes to the EMS Association. I submitted that. I was contacted Friday that the state was looking into it. They had some follow-up questions, but I was notified Monday that that grant and the EMT class was approved for funding. I wrote it for 8,800. Our allotment for Jackson County should have been 3,400. So I'm not exactly sure if that means we will get the entirety of the 8,800. But we'll at least get the 3,400 and then if there is any money left on the table, we would have access to that if everybody doesn't fulfill the grant. So.
Well, I know there's legislation on the table, you know, as far as rural communities and their EMS services and I read a little bit into it, but. Yeah.
I, it's. Pretty good last night could have passed.
Yeah, but it's pretty vague, you know, the counties can now implement a, you know, levy for some kind of EMS services, but you still, they're still going to have to come up with a budget and a, and a, and a region-wide and I mean, it's, it's not just there to throw off.
The, the state's not putting money to it. They're going to.
No. They're putting it back on.
Yeah.
Yes.
But then you, I mean, I don't understand it very well, but you guys, your hands are tied as well with regard to how much taxation you can get. So you can't get blood out of the turnip.
It's kind of a, again, a mandate that's not funded.
Right.
It's not mandated, but.
And they're so good at that.
You know, and I've talked to different EMS people, you know, and I said, you know, well, is there money available? I said, well, there could be in a sense, but I says, it basically you have to come at budget time when we're prepared to go through it and would have to look at it. It's not like in the middle of next year, we can say, yeah, here's X amount of dollars, you know, it's not that simple.
And you're talking, I mean, you're talking about a fairly extraordinary amount of money. The, the last time I looked into it, I believe And you're talking, I mean, you're talking about a fairly extraordinary amount of money, the the last time I looked into it, I believe. I talked to a couple of different um. Services that, you know, are are run, and they were claiming two hundred seventy-five to three hundred thousand a year to run it. Ambulance twenty-four seven at the paramedic level. I mean, granted, you know, we don't have twenty-four seven other than the one service, but that's still a substantial amount of money.
Yes, it is.
So.
Yeah, that's why I said it's just not that easy, you know, so yeah, give us some funding, okay, what are you gonna use it for? And what what are we doing here? We're gonna be fair to everybody, every service, you know, one service might cover a little bigger area or. Population, I I don't know, it's all it's all factors you have to consider in how to pay.
Right.
So we'll look for your recommendation on that one.
Win the Powerball? Uh so after the completion of class, we're going to um get our national pressure going um. Been building it for a while, but we would like it to include a CPR component, because all so all. EMTs, EMRs, paramedics, et cetera, um have varying certifications that they must maintain to qualify or recertify for the. Paramedic level or EMT level. So our plan is to utilize Zoom and uh make that thirty-hour course. Inclusive of that CPR certification, the Advanced Cardiac Life Support Certification, the Pediatric Advanced Life Support. As well as the pre-hospital trauma life support. With the idea being that it's a one-stop shop, you get all of the hours you need for your state certification. But you also get those little two-hour classes built into it. So once you're done with that thirty hours, you're quite literally done. Then we can do it once a year, one-stop shopping, so far we're still able to utilize um. The Zoom, we don't have to be in person, hopefully the state doesn't revert back to where it's been for the last, you know, decades, upon decades. Where it has to be live and in person, um so but so long as they don't change or revert back to the old policy, we should be able to complete that. Uh all online, which is incredibly handy. And that is my update for stuff we have done. And then I believe Ms. Luanne told me we needed to talk about the CPI request from the hospital. Do they have that email, Ms. Luanne?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, because I don't have the physical email, the request for it.
Oh.
But I did put up, I I made up a little information factoid. What it entails for me to obtain my instructor certification and then what it looks like. Teach the class at the hospital. The initial instructor training is three to four days. Um three days are mandated to be in class. So I would have to go somewhere I can do one day online. And then the other three days would be in person somewhere.
I I know I haven't. Took it home with me yesterday, and I thought I brought it back. You're you're talking about the email or what Ryan's?
What Ryan's talking about.
She just handed it to you this morning, thanks. So maybe you should have a brief. I mean, it was, it's been.
I put it in my book.
It's been since they sent that email, but what are they requesting, basically?
They are requesting that I go get my instructor certification for this crisis prevention institute and then. Teach that class at the hospital. I believe we talked about this, didn't we talk about this? A year ago?
Yes.
Year and a half ago?
Yeah, it's been a while.
So what cost is that for you or for us, I guess?
The the cost of the instructor training is three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars.
Okay.
Then there is one thousand one hundred nineteen dollars to recertify. As an instructor, and it is one day in class. Once I got the instructor certification to teach CPI at the hospital, it's fourteen hours in total. So it would be two days, two eight-hour days um to teach the class. Um a year ago or whenever the last time we spoke about this. I did poll all of the EMS services and fire services. Um none of them were interested in. Becoming certified as one of these crisis prevention people. Um and from. Thursday, when I found out about it, until today, I was able to get a hold of about six. People that responded back to me, and they are still not interested in this course, so it would solely be for the hospital staff. I'm not exactly sure how many.
So if there are people went somewhere else to get the class, what would it cost then?
Well, they have instructors. They they currently, I believe, I'm not, I wouldn't put my hand on a Bible, I believe they currently have two. I'm assuming the impetus of this request is, I believe, one of the people that they sent to. Get their instructor cert is retiring sometime in the near future.
They have to do this yearly, is this correct or how?
From everything I could find online, the certification lasts two years.
Two years.
Yes, sir.
Well. Yeah, I'd like to see what they're spending on doing this for one thing. I mean, if they have two instructors present at their facility.
Well, I think there needs to be a lot more communication at the hospital to see, you know, if they're willing to absorb the expense of it, um.
I believe they would pay for his training to be an instructor. Um we have talked to Ryan about this in the past, but got the message that he is too busy, I never delivered that message, I came to you folks and.
So what is your time constraints or options or availability?
I I've been scheduling things for Saturday for the last three months, so. But I I don't know exactly how many employees they have, I the last time. Like queried it for pals and I believe they had a hundred or a hundred and twenty people. If you did ten people per class. So it'd be a hundred and seventy hours worth of my time to go in to teach it.
Would anybody want to share for the jail, people wanna take that class, or do they need something like that?
Um they need something different, they need mental health first aid through the um, and that's what the Iowa Law Enforcement. Agency at Des Moines stipulates, um which is different, because this actually has a hands-on portion. Um again, I I from what I was told when asking if other services. Would like this class, they don't like in, well, one, two of them. Two of the service directors do work at the hospital, so they have the training, and they do not want the training for their service. One of the first things we learn in for EMS is scene safety and. We don't go hands-on with patients, we leave and have law enforcement there.
I would, I I don't know, just just thinking about it, I would certainly think that Genesis has the capability of training.
Well, yeah, they should have.
Yeah. Unless you're charging our hospital. Bigger fish to fry than what we're a one-person staff here, you know.
If if all of my services said, yeah, this is what we want, uh then that's what I'm here for is to do was. The ambulance services want um. I have not found and I. Fully admit since Thursday, I've not been able to speak with each individual service. I know I did a year, year and a half ago when this was initially brought up. And it was not something they wanted.
But it's certainly tying up a lot of your time.
Yes, sir. And I'm at the hospital currently every Thursday to do AJ classes, so CPR pals, ACLS.
Where do you have to go for the training? For you to get your training, where do you go?
That's the kicker, you go wherever it is, and I don't say that dismissively, the last, when they asked about this a year and a half ago. The closest place was in Wisconsin. Um I did have this certification years and years ago. Um when I was employed at the hospital, and we were fortunate at that time to have it in Davenport. But it's it's where you can find the where they hold the class, that, you know, they don't have like an NICC location. They send an instructor to one of these hotels or whatever.
Sure.
Conference room. That's where you obtain the training.
At present, how much does the hospital put in, seventeen thousand or twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Out of uh what's the budget for that, ninety?
I myself would have to have, I don't know, more information from Jean if she wants to come and propose why or who. Yeah, why not Genesis is not um having a hand in this, or um they got that many employees that she'd be automatically. For me, that they should have that. One man show can do that all in us.
Is it, I mean, you may as well say at least five thousand if you have highlights or anything else in there to get that sort of traction.
And then how long, how often do you have to recertify?
I believe it's every two years.
You yourself have to recertify every two years?
And that's a one day in class day, and then. And then it says it's, yeah, this is all on their site, and I did prove, I did provide you folks with their website. Um but according to their website, it's one thousand one hundred and nineteen for recertification. The class to teach the class to. For initial certification, so if I were to become certified and teach class, it's fourteen hours in class. Um again, if they have a hundred and twenty people, twelve classes of twenty-four, twenty-four eight-hour days.
Long time.
I'll I'll do whatever you guys don't.
Well, this time I need more information from, and I don't, I guess I don't understand this, who's Mike, that me? What can we say? I don't know what that means, it goes through me, I, you know, maybe I was a sheriff at the time. Personally, I would think she would come to here and propose something. Hmm hmm. And then we could ask our questions like we had here, what what is Genesis's policy, or what do they have, and what are they? What do they have for skin in the game here for? Doing all the training in there. I mean, to me, whatever they put in. For your services, a levy for it anyway.
Right. Above and beyond their other levy.
Right.
I don't know what you guys think, that's my opinion, I would like, sure appreciate Jean, somebody from the.
Oh, I just think we need more information.
Yeah.
I do too.
Do you wanna try and have Jean come down and talk to us, or? Want Ryan to ask her some additional questions and have her have him get back to us?
I think we want somebody, either Jean to come or representative from the hospital, from the Jackson County Regional Health Center to come and explain why, what are. Their logic behind it, uh that's my opinion. I mean, I I like to hear what Ryan has to say, but I don't expect him to be the middleman. And say, you know, they told me this, and I'm telling you that, I I.
To the best of my knowledge, I have not been approached about this topic since I brought it to you folks last.
And when she comes, you can certainly be here, because if there's questions for either side, then we can certainly try to get an answer.
It's the the time commitment and the. Singularly focused nature of how this would be utilized are my only concern.
Well, the time commitment would would be extreme, especially with what your workload currently is, and the services that you're currently providing. To all of the various services in Jackson County, and this would remove you from being able to do some of that, and that concerns me.
Well, and I mean, I'm picking up a lot more with like the police departments and sheriff's office and jail. Um and we need to start doing the PHDLS, which I went and got my instructor for solely.
Okay, what's PHDLS?
Pre-hospital trauma life support.
Okay.
So it's it's another course. So it's.
Saying, I can fill the words and fill in the blanks.
The pre-hospital trauma life support is a a certification that Shad asked me about, so I went and got my instructor for that. Um for the hospital, but that training um is obviously very applicable to the other services. Um so yeah, I mean, I'm gonna add PHDLS, I'm current, I currently offer four days. Every, so every Thursday, I'm at the hospital. To do what I'm currently doing for them, and I, you know, if if you guys tell me to do it, I'll do it.
Here's here's what I think, I I mean, we're just gonna invite Jane or somebody from the hospital to to come down here and speak to us on it. And if you wanna be here, that's fine, what I'd also like to have from you maybe is. Touch bases with the other services and and give us something either in writing or what their thoughts are on this, you know, good or bad, yes or no, yeah, you know.
But I would, I would say that it would be extremely important when she's here that you're here. So that you can be a part of the conversation, because we don't do your job, you do it. And you know how involved you are at the present time, and we'd have to find out what the what what they're really talking about as far as your commitment and time.
I I just have questions for her, you know, as far as what we're, Genesis is on in in this game, you know, in the in the process.
Yeah, I agree.
I just don't have enough information, you know, if it's a, if it's a hospital, a regional hospital, Jackson County Regional Hospital responsibility. To have this, and you know, that's something we can talk about, and are we training Genesis employees or what?
It's it's ju- it's a considerable amount of time, and you know, it's it adds one more thing that I am. I I can't, I can't call in and say, hey, hey, Bob, can you cover me on this class?
Yeah. You have to be there.
Right. And and I already have. Quite quite a number of needs, and if we're holding another EMT course, which obviously takes priority. You know, that's from six to ten every night, so tonight. It's from six to ten.
And that's. You know, each service is getting some, getting trained here.
Yes, sir.
I would make sure that when your um fifteen are certified, that you do a news release. So that the newspaper knows what's going on, and people know what you're doing for the county.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess.
Any other questions?
I will be in touch, I guess, will we talk to Jane and if she wants to come.
Okay, now I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um yesterday I was on my early childhood Iowa um meeting, um where we're. Visiting the providers of services and going over, since we can't do it in person, we're doing it on Zoom. And one of the things they talked about yesterday um for Clinton in Jackson County. Um and I would be more concerned with Jackson than Clinton, but one of the things they talked about was having first aid for youth. And trying to find, they said that they had somebody they thought from Muscatine that would teach something like that. And I didn't know if that was something that you would would be willing to do, I told him about you. And told him you were our EMS person in Jackson County, and I said, I know he gives first aid classes, but I said, I don't know. You know, about the youth part, because these are all zero to five ages, but. Um I told her I would ask you, I said, you were coming in and um just see what what their needs would be, and. But I I was amazed with some of the facts and figures we got yesterday from.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, so like teaching the teachers and schools or teaching kids?
No, the kid, teaching the faculty. How to, if they have something happen, what, if somebody falls and breaks their arm, what should they do?
So I guess my question was their conversation about them, what school nurse actually does or they're training from?
They're, they're not at schools. These are preschools. Like Sunshine, they don't have, they're not in a school setting as, as the high school or. Like Cardinal, it wouldn't be in that type of a setting. These are, these are daycares, daycares and preschools.
And I know that, I mean, there's a handful of schools that don't have school nurses at least daily. But yeah, I'm, I'm happy like.
I will at least give them your, your contact information and. Um, I thought it'd be foolish for somebody that's from musketeen to drive to Jackson County to teach a class when we had Ryan here.
And we, we could just do a hybrid of the stop the bleed campaign and then throw in some very basic. Common first aid. When I do the schools, they actually need a heart saver part. Which is very, very simple. Two thirty compressions, two breaths, but I provide the, the healthcare aspect. As much as what they need for EpiPens choking, et cetera, that aren't necessarily included in what the state mandates. And we've always had a really good response from the teachers and we can throw in. The, you know, kind of a hybrid stop the bleed. Education for them. And absolutely, I mean.
Okay.
There again, that's gonna, that's gonna reach so many people where you go into that school and you're touching. A whole bunch of, you know, citizens, yes, they're minors, but the parents. Uh, and it's obviously important and now that time that I'm spending is reaching out to a whole bunch of people, not. One specific.
Okay, well, I will kind, I will let, um, it's. Childcare resource and referral is, is the group, but I will, I will talk to them and talk to Cindy and. I have your contact information, so I'll give it to them and see where it goes.
That's an easy thing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we have. About three minutes before our public hearing, so.
Uh, one, one thing I just wanted to talk to you about and wanted to make you aware. There was a. We can talk about the same thing, but I don't, I didn't give you a. Wait, it's, we have a few minutes before the public hearing. So I just would like you to know that we did receive a check from the state of Iowa for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Nine hundred and eighty three dollars and twelve cents. So we did.
That number passed me.
A hundred and twenty five thousand, nine hundred and eighty three dollars and twelve cents. So we did receive that money. It is not allocated for anything at this point. The state basically, I think you had talked about it in your supervisors meeting. But statewide supervisors meeting, so I'm just making you aware, we did receive this money. We put it into the. Capital improvement, courthouse capital, courthouse capital improvement. We weren't really sure, I didn't want it to see an absorb into the, you know, general fund, so to speak, into the end end fund balance. So we specifically put it into the capital, the capital fund for the courthouse improvements and that way we can spend. As we have projects that are necessary. So I just, I wanted to let you know, we received it and this is where we put it.
So I, I guess in the statewide meeting, I think you guys brought it to that time, but they talked about, you know, working with the public, the public health. Maybe is there a need for? Whatever maybe it could be training or if it could be. But I guess that's, you know, maybe even with law enforcement or something too, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't want to earmark it just for something, you know, until something arises to that point.
I think we just have to look at the possibilities and, and decide, determine how it's best utilized.
Yeah, I mean, I just, that's what I said. I wanted to let you know, I wanted to let everybody know that we've received it and now you can make a decision as far as. What to do with that money.
Well, I think you put it in the right place.
I, I think so. I mean, we talked about it.
Well, we certainly don't have any requests for it at this time. If we have someone that's come forward and say we could really use it for public information, public resources, you know, to the point that. Be a health issue.
I, I guess my main point that I wanted to say is I didn't want it just to be thrown in the, into the ending. You have any words before the public? Hearing show, any words of wisdom on the, on the budget? Just that we reduce the supplemental fund, the supplemental tax levy.
It was twenty five until before the.
Twenty five cents.
But that was before we had some other.
Then we reduced, we, we reduced the tax levy overall by twenty five.
Okay.
And part of that was a reduction in supplemental, but a raise in the mental health levy rate. So between the two offsetting each other, we reduced the total levy by twenty five.
And that was like two hundred and eighty eight thousand.
And we reduced the primary cemetery levy by fifteen thousand dollars. So that was like.
And that was basically because of the amount of carryover they had. And that we didn't see that those, with their proposed budget for the next year with carryover and with the reduction in their. Their levy, they would still have the funds to do what they planned to do.
You know what? I, this has slipped my memory or we didn't talk about it. I haven't decided. Larry, can you tell me about? The money that was allocated for the water sewer project at the Herschel Interpreter Center?
Herschel?
Yeah, see, it, it's. The line item says Herschel Interpreter Center and then the project says water sewers structures. So I wasn't sure if that was like the pond or.
Well, yours was on the list, but it's on subject.
Coming up.
Well.
Yeah.
In the next fiscal year?
In twenty two, yeah. So we, we were looking.
Are you sure that's not the water over to cook, hook them in? With the city of Bellevue?
You're thinking Spruce Creek. This is Herschel.
Yeah, I know.
That's what the line item says. And so we were, of course, we were here late.
Maybe you got on the wrong line.
So that's, so it was a hundred and fifty thousand and that's what we were wondering, is it for the Spruce Creek instead of for Herschel, but?
I think so. We had designated for if that project ever got done at Spruce Creek that they run it out there, that. Run from the top down into the park area.
Right.
That was designated at a.
That's there, there you go.
Okay, tonight that, that project one, yeah.
It's as simple as putting an SP on there instead of Herschel. Or SC, I guess.
Changed it from eighty one to seventy nine.
I would touch base with Nathan. But I know we did that the last couple of years, but that project was still.
Okay.
It's still.
Well, we definitely need to leave that in there and you know, we were trying to look at all of the different budget things to prepare for today and. Neither one of us remembered that conversation, but I do remember the hundred and fifty thousand for Spruce Creek.
I see they replaced the, uh, keep, I think that's on the back.
I did see that too. Yeah. In the notice, you'll notice. That. The capital projects and administration lines on expenses are up. It looks like they're up significantly, but. Especially on the admin side, administration line, that went up because we reduced. We moved health insurances.
All to one line item.
Yes, yeah, yes. So that's why that's up that significantly. And capital projects. That's the Spruce Creek. And the secondary roads, bridges and road construction projects.
Okay, at this time I would open the public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
And let me clarify that, that, that we're the public hearing.
Twenty one, twenty two. Right, just for the levy.
Yeah.
Hearing no input, I would make a motion to close the public hearing, no?
Yeah, I don't see anybody other than Kelly and Teresa that are on from the public, so. We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
Then I would need a motion to approve resolution number seven ninety seven dash zero three dash zero two dash twenty twenty one. Of the maximum property tax resolution for the general county services and rural county services. For FY twenty twenty one slash twenty twenty two as presenter.
So moved.
Second. The motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
I also made a motion to set the date of March twenty third, twenty twenty one at ten AM for the public hearing for the proposed FY twenty twenty two budget.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, that was the twenty third at what time? Ten AM, okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Right.
I, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, thank you, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley. Thanks. Have a good day. Cloud in the sky, they tell me. I heard it on the news last night. I said, how they could predict that, that there will not be a cloud in the sky.
That's what it says. At this time we'll be, um, joined by Luanne Goki, our executive assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will start with the calendar. Ten o'clock this morning, Jack has an early childhood Iowa site visit scheduled, which he may or may not make.
No, actually they had the eye smiles yesterday.
Okay, okay. And you have another one scheduled at two o'clock.
Right.
This afternoon, um, by Zoom. Wednesday, March third at nine AM is a regional transit authority, an RTA meeting for Zoom, by Zoom for all of you. At six PM tomorrow is an E nine one one service board meeting for Mike.
And that is, do we have the basement reserved or is that gonna be here?
And I also have it set up as a virtual meeting if you wanted to do it that way. So, but I do have the bigger downstairs reserved for that.
It's just so hard to hear down in there. Everybody's spread out so far and you call in on the phone, you just can't hear people.
How many people do you have? Can you do it in here?
It probably, yeah, I mean, a lot of them guys are calling in, which they can hear, which they can use this phone. Otherwise we're calling in on a cell phone down there. You know, they can hear me at the front desk running the meeting, but somebody in the back row, he's across the hall, basically.
Well, both the times I filled in for you, we had it in here.
Yeah, we just started doing that since the. I think we'll try, maybe I'll meet him here front of the room, try to do it, see how many people we have.
Reduce the carbon dioxide level in here, right?
When's our camera system going? Do we have a day?
We paid half of the, as you saw on the claims today, we paid half of it today to get it going. I, anywhere from four to six weeks.
That'll be nice.
That'll be good.
Lots of training.
Yeah.
And I agree, the early child that I was saying misses that I talked about earlier, I think, Jack, you have two every day this week, actually, correct?
Yep.
One in the morning usually and, and one in the afternoon. Friday, March fifth at noon is a workforce Iowa office hours meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at two to four in the afternoon is a regional governing board budget work session by Zoom also for Jack. Monday, March eighth at seven AM is an early childhood Iowa executive board meeting by Zoom for Jack. And three that afternoon is a Mississippi Valley workforce CEO meeting by Zoom also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March ninth at nine AM. That afternoon at four o'clock is in the Hook of the River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at six o'clock that evening is a building resilient communities webinar that's available for all of you. Business, my main business for today is the appointment of the twenty twenty week, twenty twenty one week commissioner. For Jackson County. And I have the application from GD Collins here from Jackson County Conservation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and, and seconded to appoint Jeanne Carr, Collins higher as the Jackson County Wheat Commissioner. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
And I will have a certification for you to sign, Jack, as the chair. Other than that, you can tell this is.
We do have. We could put over the air that we do have an opening in the zoning board, uh, planning and zoning board. For, uh, an individual that has decided not to stay on and be reappointed. So we would have an opening if anybody is interested, they could contact you or one of the supervisors.
And to be gender balanced, we would like to have a female, is that correct?
Well, when I looked at the list, I, I, I thought it could be either.
Okay. Well, we certainly can't turn somebody down.
So we're also gonna have to make an appointment at the historic preservation.
Yeah, with Ross Rivers death.
Yeah.
We already have two vacancies on there, so that's something we really need to do.
Yeah, if anybody needs the job description and the responsibilities for the zoning. Readly available here. It doesn't take a lot of time. Basically, it's. Meetings that are set up by the zoning commissioners for if they have a discrepancy.
I guess I, that's all.
I maybe want to throw this, I don't know if this is the right time or not. So on our sixteen, the March sixteenth meetings. I'm supposed to get my second shot and they playing from nine o'clock until eleven o'clock, but. The last time I went at eight thirty and they let me in and then I had to sit for fifteen minutes, but so I don't know if you want, what you guys want to do, if you want to. It's up to you, Jack and Larry.
What do you want to have it in the afternoon?
No, I could be here nine thirty if that's the case.
I thought you said it was from nine to noon.
No, they're taking, taking people from, that's when they're gonna be there, but I can go in at nine, I can know. I can go in probably eight thirty.
So. So do we want to tell ten o'clock?
I think nine thirty is fine with me, so I, that's up to you guys.
We start at nine thirty.
Okay. Sixteenth, uh, we'll have our emotion to approve moving the, the supervisors meeting from nine to nine thirty.
And our next meeting will be that.
We can do it today.
You're talking about the sixteenth, moving that meeting back?
Yes.
I think we can do it anytime, so do it today.
Might have a conflict with mine. I have one Friday, the first one, my second one.
My second one's on the tenth.
The twenty fifth tentative for RPA. Not confirmed.
When is your first one, Larry?
This Friday at eight thirty.
And you're gonna have it again already on the twenty fifth, now that's.
Forty weeks, yeah.
Oh, they told me I, we had to wait for, yeah.
I think it depends on the vaccine.
Oh, yeah, maybe so.
Some are four weeks, some are four weeks, some are three weeks.
And now they just came out, the other one, it's just the one show.
Johnson and Johnson's come out, yeah, yeah, last night they. Johnson and Johnson's come out, yeah, yeah, last night they approved.
She's speeding things up considerably.
Sure. Yeah, I didn't know when to bring that up, but um also, I, we, I seen the email from the A C A P.
What's her name? She's coming, Jane.
Yeah.
She's coming next week.
That'd be all. That was good information and, you know, that's.
And I got, we, and we all got noticed that workforce is going to have an office down at, at their office. And our former um new view office, A C A P office.
Yeah.
Where where Renell Clark has, they're going to be there every Monday.
Good.
For people that need um unemployment or.
How many people do you think that will be?
They'll only hire, they'll only be one person working in there.
I know that we received a phone call from Renell that she wants another five to seven dedicated parking spots down there.
Renell says there's going to be, Head Start opens back up again, there's going to be a huge parking crisis down there because of the way things are set up right now. And right now, they can spill over into the senior centers parking lot, but once that reopens, that will be available to them. So um I gave it to Lisa because she's looking for their five to seven parking spots for them down there for, because otherwise the department, their clients have to part.
I think we'll have to wait till we come to advise this first.
I mean, I love that. I, I don't understand yet, so I'm trying to understand what.
Yes, never had a problem before, didn't it?
No, no, and they had this before.
Senior center before and.
Well, they had somebody from Iowa Works there before when they had on, went before they closed the, the offices. We're not going to pour concrete. No, I think we just have to play it by ear and see what happens.
And maybe this is just a way of restriping the parking lot to get additional.
Be striped in the first place, it's not now.
So it's just random parking. That's a larger down there, though.
Yeah, I guess I'm not concerned about the parking. If it gets to be an issue, we'll have to consider it at that point in time, but.
I can't say that when I went down and looked at it, that I would decided about making, you know, a big change down there. I mean, we would have to force some significant concrete.
Yeah.
I just don't know if that's a good idea.
I think we'll just play it by ear.
See what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah. So did you change your meeting day then from on March sixteenth?
No motion was made yet to change it from nine to nine thirty.
I would make the motion to change your March sixteenth meeting to start time of nine thirty A M.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Are we into unfinished business yet?
Yeah, well, we're on boards and commissions, so um I just wanted to give you some information from the C C R and R meeting that we had, which was kind of eye opening to me with with all of the COVID stuff that was going around in Clinton County. Um, from this, from six, two thousand fifteen till today, they have lost forty two percent of their childcare providers. In Jackson County during the same period of time, we've lost fifty two percent of our childcare providers. Um, and uh, the gal from the state C C R and R said they have one to date, they've had one new application, but she said that there were twelve applications pending. But she says that the childcare centers just closed like crazy because they couldn't have it in how, you know, in person.
Well, that's all legislation right now.
Yeah, I know, but this is, this was what they told me yesterday.
So what they're proposing, what I read on that was so you can have in-house home care and childcare getting up to five without being registered or licensed or something, somehow, I don't remember how it ran, I should, don't take that as a remember how the legislation read, but it's going to take us away some of the requirements that some of the rural residents again can do childcare at their home, I think, is.
Well, I think that's what probably implications are.
Yeah.
For in-home, because she said, she said that there's a lot of lot of women that either lost their jobs or they were working from their homes. And um it was difficult for them to find childcare, so they decided, well, if I'm going to be home, maybe I can have a few other kids come and I'll do, and that's the way she talked, that there were quite a few people that were doing that type of childcare in the home, so. But I thought that was huge drops.
Yeah, that's, you know, the kids are still out there somewhere.
Yeah.
Stuff to do, stuff to find.
Yes, it is.
And once you get in a place, you're required to have X amount of hours, you know, you've got to pay for the hours no matter what.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. So did we have some unfinished business that we needed?
I don't, I was just wondering about these reports, we haven't got one for a long, long time, are we still doing this or?
What is?
From Marty, while he's done.
Oh, sorry, I was like, what is?
It's a request and and you know, where people would have to put a fill out form for a request. It's kind of interesting to know what uh, what.
We can probably print that out. I, uh, we still, people still submit maintenance requests order.
Okay, so this is the last one I have was back in nineteen. I don't know if this is the last one, that's the last one.
We can print that out, we can.
I mean, it's nice to have anyway, when he comes in, if we're talking to him and how's this going and how's that going?
Yeah, but I, 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 I guess another thing that I think is important for us to know what he is doing.
Yeah.
Because that one day when he was gone and no one knew where he was.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it's important that at least if nothing else, he'd check in with you. If he's going to be gone from the courthouse for the whole day um or out of, out of this area, I think we, we need to know that.
A couple of things, I, since I did start my morning in Seville this morning, secondary roads did make a sweep through, um, so that did get done. I don't see a lot of foot traffic, but you know, the snow is melting, so that was, but at least it got done.
Yeah, I knew they did it.
Um. Yeah, I mean, um, we still have kind of some issues with snow removal and we're working through those and um, you know. Yeah, but I think in response to you, Mike, I think we can print that out.
Yeah, no, that, I just want kind of an update, maybe, you know.
And visiting with Marty.
That's been done and.
I think he has a desire to go back to the care facility and finish the shed. But I think that'll be.
I, I was under the assumption that he'd been working on some of that one, it wasn't so cold. I know when I was twenty below, he didn't want to work on it, but I thought he was working on it now.
I think that's kind of where he's headed.
Well, I guess.
I do have a, an email I will forward on to you guys also. I sat in a little bit on the Irish meeting last week, was it? I see Lisa jumped in for a little bit, too.
I did.
But it was interesting and I didn't have a lot to report on, but I did go back and call the city of Bellevue, what they had on record, and she sent me what they have and the estimate from I I W to do this. And the in-house meter thing, I think, if I'm looking at it right now, I'll send it to you, you can look it over. But I think it come to like seventy eight thousand. Like the meter each one, but then.
Seven or eight thousand?
Seventy eight.
Seventy eight thousand, okay.
I know you had mentioned seven hundred P D, maybe.
Yeah.
Do an extra.
No, okay.
Sure, but it showed, you know, the recommendations from I I W, what they were planning and and it was, it was a nice report to read from city of Bellevue had gotten from I I W, so I'll send it to you guys.
Great.
That's, that's workable.
Yeah, that is.
No, I mean, the whole project itself, what I was reading about it, look, so there's basically a hundred and five residences there that would need to be done, and there's like five that are in compliance right now. So they'll have to be done also, so they won't get back contamination, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, eighty five campsites that also will be hooked, you know?
To me, if I'm a property owner out there, I'd rather have a meter and pay my.
Well, there was a couple of property owners on there and and that on the meeting also, they definitely know that they, they can't sell some of their properties up there right now, they're just not compliant, they just can't do it.
Some of the other ones are on the verge of failing too, so.
Yeah, no.
It's not a good situation.
What's the timeframe for that, Larry?
They said at that meeting, I think, is, they hope next month.
Yeah.
They would hear back.
Next month to what?
To hear back from the grant money.
Oh, okay.
Well, otherwise you gotta think.
So then, what's the process then? I know, then you have to go out for bid and, so are they looking at maybe this year yet, or are we looking at next spring or?
Soon as possible, and I think they're waiting, when there's two grants, one's for five hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, I think, and the other one was half of that, which is another. There was a seven twenty one and it's right at a million dollars for grant money, which is a big chunk of what needs to be done. But even with that, we still don't have the bids out there, and we don't know, we can't tell you your water bill's going to be this much per month, we know. We're not close enough to that.
But I think at the time when I I W did it first, they were considering an eight inch main, you know, and, you know, how they proposed, and some of that was so they had fire suppression too, well. Most of that community is within quarter, one hundred feet from a river. So I think they're talking about two inch line now.
Yeah, well, we started out at Berry Creek with that.
Yeah.
An eight inch line going down to the shelter, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I'm like, the shelter is going to, at that time, it's going to cost a hundred and twenty five thousand. I leave it burned down a couple of times, you're still money. And you have the creek right there, too. It just didn't make any sense, so it went to a one inch line down there, which is all it needs.
Otherwise, I don't have any other. The only other, it's not unfinished business, but it is kind of unfinished business. Um, we still have not had an opportunity to meet with the tourism and um the Welcome Center. And I still think that we need to have a heart to heart discussion about the future.
Yeah. Yeah, what was decided last week, and they were going to have, well, I sat in on their last meeting, too, I think it was discussed, and they don't, they're not sure where they're going this spring until some of this subsides hopefully in a month or two, that they'll have a better idea what they want to do with that. Think town's probably in Arizona now.
He said, was in Texas.
He was in Texas during the meeting, he was driving. That's when they were getting snow down there, they couldn't.
So how many acres in there, it's like? Or is there any value assessed on or appraised, I should say?
I would think there would be.
I'm gonna have to look.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, you, it, yeah, there certainly would be a road frontage there and value, if you might have to change the zoning. I don't know what it's.
It was commercial, motel was. It's long time.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, I just want to find out what their plans are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've allocated money to them and we allocated money last year and it wasn't open at all. So I think we need to see what their, what their plans are.
Yeah.
I did review their budget, they still have a pretty good area over. A lot.
And we haven't heard anything from the city as far as the South Main Bridge, as far as how they want to plan to do that or.
Next year, I guess.
We thought, huh?
Not until next year, I would think.
No, but we talked about the staging thing, I think, we want to talk about having a conversation with them or where they're at with it. The new administrator is going to see how the older administrator or what.
Well, I think it'd be important for, I don't know if we need to go to a city council meeting or just send a letter to the city council asking them, you know, God, sixty seven percent of that bridge is ours, and and we have not been contacted at all about how we think it should proceed. So I think we need to send him a letter and when, when is Gerald Dunn?
Already.
He's gone, yeah, he's gone.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember if he was gone or if he was.
Carolina.
Okay. So I just, I just think that we need to be kept better in the loop as to what's going on, so.
I mean, even our new engineers.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So it'd be good to get together again.
So I think we just need to send them a letter and tell them, you know, we need to have a some kind of a chat about the process and.
Are you willing to dress something up there, Lou, are you listening?
I'm listening.
I don't know.
Have you printed all that up a letter?
Well, I don't know if we need to meet with the city, the interim city manager and the, and the mayor or the roads department, um, Alan.
Frank, yeah, Alan.
I just, I don't know who we need to talk to, but I think that we have a right to know.
Well, the last meeting we had was at City Hall, well, City Hall's been closed ever since then, so it's hard to get together unless they want to come here, but I mean, Frank was there and the engineers were there.
Yeah, but all they did was show posters, they never really said anything, they could go around and look at the posters, but hell, I couldn't tell you what the posters would say.
Is there anything there in twenty eight that says we have to be involved at some point?
I don't know if there is or not, Luanne, I can't remember what the twenty.
I would like to hear the numbers are.
I would like to know the difference.
Yeah, exactly, that you're going to be shocked. Because, I mean, we talked to the construction guys, it's like, yeah, it almost doubles the price, well, that's ridiculous.
So maybe we won't be shocked, but we, it's something we need to know. I mean, I.
Obviously.
Had an estimate out there that night, too, I think. Of what it would cost if we didn't stage it and what it would cost if we did.
I know we don't want to cause a huge inconvenience to the public. And there are, I mean, regardless of what we do, it's going to be inconvenient, especially if they're doing plant East Plats or West Plats Street at the same time that they're doing the bridge, I mean, that's going to be.
Well, just.
They'll all have to go to Herschel and come in that way.
No, just go out, some of it. I mean, but that doesn't drop on.
No, it doesn't.
You have to do a little bit around.
Yeah, so anyway, but I think that we, I think we need to be kept up to date as to what, how it's proceeding. Anything else?
Yes. We asked that the public get a turn vote today.
Yeah, I did.
Let your voice be heard.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
The motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.